You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 10th, 2019 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 AM Friday morning and again at 4:00 PM Sunday afternoon. We're honored to have Councilmember Larson, Cipio, and McIntosh here today. Thank you so much for joining us and thank you for your service. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning request however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected body during their review of the requests. Before addressing the planning board today, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the September 12th and September 26th meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, sign of "aye." Pose the same sign. All right, Mr. Corley calling you now to do the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the consent agenda is item B1, which is a final development plan in HBS two-phase zoning on 3.64 acres on the north side of Glenview Drive west of Union Cross Road. This is a photo of the subject property. In the background, this is the subject property in the shops at Glen Crossing. This is the site plan that was submitted by the petitioner for a tractor supply company. You can see that the building is down along Glenview Drive. They also submitted some elevations. The site is bound by the conditions of the original zoning and so the site plan and the elevations have to be consistent with the already approved conditions. Staff recommends approval of this plan. I'm sorry. No, 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 they're here. Yeah, staff recommends that you approve this plan. It meets all UDO conditions.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Anyone might want to make a motion or discussion?
You want this right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a couple of motions. That the planning board finds that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the planning board recommends approval of W 3174.
All right, we'll need two votes.
Two votes.
Two votes.
So I should have split the votes. Sorry.
All right, you do the first motion for him.
I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
I also move that the planning board recommends approval of 3174. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Chairman and members of the board, the second item is B2, another final development plan in LOS two-phase zoning on 1.68 acres on Whittaker Road just north of the Whittaker Square Shopping Center. This is a photo of the subject property. So this is a parking lot expansion for an existing dental office. You can barely see the dental office here in the background and this is where the parking lot expansion is going to be. And then this is a photo of the existing dental office that was in the background of the previous photo. This is the site plan that the petitioner submitted. The darkened area or the shaded area is where the parking lot expansion is proposed to be. They do not propose another access point from Whittaker Road. Site plan meets all the UDO conditions and staff recommends approval of this plan.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Any more ready to motion? I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right, motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion?
Yes, I actually had a question.
Sure.
Having to do with the road layout around there. From the maps that we had in our book, it looked like there was a kind of a triangle and you could go through on all sides of it. But when we went out there, it looked to me like that road was closed.
Let's see.
Where from right...
You're talking about here?
Beyond, yeah, further up, yeah, further up, yeah, right there.
Okay.
There is a closure there and what I wanted to know is, is that road ever intended to be opened up? And how that might affect the traffic pattern for the...
My understanding, and again, I wasn't here whenever Whittaker Square was built. It was part of whenever they actually did a realignment to get rid of the angle that's there so that the road was actually closed and realigned. If you'll notice on the image that's on the screen, the new road that goes into North Peace Haven, I believe that's North Peace Haven. That road is the new road and what was there was abandoned.
Okay, all right. That was my question, whether it would ever be, okay.
Any further discussion? All right, there's a previous motion and second on the floor. All in favor? Opposed? Same. That's unanimous. Thank you.
I also move that the planning board recommends approval of W 2732. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. All in favor? Poses? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the next item is B3, W 3421. This is a request to rezone 0.37 acre from HB Highway Business to GB General Business Limited Use. It's at the northwest corner of the intersection of Reynolda Road and Fair Lawn Drive. It is currently a vacant service station at that intersection and there are other auto-oriented uses on the other corners of this same intersection. The area plan recognizes this property as part of the Reynolda Road and Fair Lawn Drive Activity Center and recommends commercial use for the property. Staff has conducted analysis. The proposal is consistent with the area plan, consistent with surrounding development pattern and use types, and the request allows some flexibility in the size of the potential development. Highway Business has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and the General Business District does not have a minimum lot size. So the applicant has proposed some conditions to limit access from Reynolda Road. They'll only have one access and it's right-in only. And then they also have a signage condition. The staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
Can I question?
Sure.
Go over the conditions again.
Sure. That access to the site from Reynolda Road is limited to one driveway on Reynolda Road. They also have access on Fair Lawn Drive, but the condition restricts the access on Reynolda. And then the signage condition specifically is that freestanding signage is limited to one monument with a maximum height of eight feet and a maximum copy area of 50 square feet.
Let's see. Can you pull up the other picture of this that shows the site? I'm sorry, the...
The aerial.
Sort of that. On our map, the exit out of Reynolda Manor onto Fair Lawn is not showing.
Okay.
If you look at, if you look at that, and can you point that out where that is?
They have two access points. The shopping center has two access points on the Fair Lawn. This is, my mouse disappeared. This is one of them, just next to Jimmy John's and I think the other side is Papa John's. And then the other is further down here, right in front of the building.
Near the base there. In knowing the site for many, many years and driving this area and then recently going out and looking at it again, I'm also understanding that they haven't come up with any way to connect this site down into Reynolda Manor proper because of the topographical issues that are present in that.
Correct.
Right? You know, based on the various uses that are listed in this change, there could be major problems with traffic here. I mean, because it looks like you could have people going north on Reynolda Road trying to turn in there just after the intersection. We already have major stacking issues that are present coming up to Reynolda Road from Fair Lawn and trying to get out of the upper exit of Reynolda Manor. Would the petitioner consider working with you on a site plan to help alleviate some of those issues? I mean, I think this is a wonderful place for development. It needs to be developed, everything like that, but I just see continued traffic problems and depending on what they put there, major traffic problems if they don't work with the planning staff and try to come up with a plan on this.
So I guess I could speak to a portion of what you said and then I might actually call the petitioner up here to speak to the second part. But with regard to traveling north on Reynolda Road and trying to make left turns, I assume that's what you're talking about, into the site right after the intersection?
Right.
The condition that they've proposed would actually restrict access so that you can only turn into the site, traveling south on Reynolda Road. You can't come in if you're traveling north.
So they would have a sort of a triangle there that would keep it from allowing it to come in from that way?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was based on some feedback that we gave them a while ago when they submitted a sketch plan for review, but I think Stimel is here and they can speak to whether or not they'd be interested in submitting a site plan.
Yeah, so there wasn't anything presented on how to get out of there and take a left up on the Fair Lawn and get up. I mean, it may not be an issue. I mean, if it's a low intensity use, it won't be an issue and, you know, with the service station, it was only an issue occasionally, but...
That didn't come up in the comments when we, when there was a sketch plan for review, but again, this is a limited use request so there's no site-specific development that's proposed. So the plan that we looked at isn't guaranteed to be what's actually developed here.
Right. That makes sense. Well, I mean, does the developer want to address that or would they consider delaying it and working on a site plan with the staff?
Well, if there's no, if there's no user for this space yet, you know, you don't know what your site plan is going to be as far as...
Well, I know and I don't want to jump and change the zoning before we have something if that traffic's going to be an issue.
Just do keep in mind, right now it's general use HB.
Yeah.
So they're changing the use to limited use GB. They are limiting some uses. They're coming up with some conditions and whatever has to be, you know, whatever eventually goes there will be subject to review by inspection staff, but also as part of that, it would necessitate a driveway permit which, given this location, I'm not sure if Reynolda is NC DOT or Winston DOT, but essentially both, the city engineering department and NC DOT, if it's a NC DOT street, would have the ability to review it and could further require closures of driveways and other things beyond any condition imposed by the planning board. So I mean, again, I think there's some checks and balances there. I certainly hear what you're saying.
Did I hear you say that there would be some kind of oversight on the entrance on the Fair Lawn?
Well, like I said, I mean, basically, right now, they have two entrances on Fair Lawn. There's nothing that would say that they're allowed to keep those. Sometimes through the review process, if there's an entrance that's too closed, they're coming back in and doing a, too close to the intersection, they're doing a redevelopment. Engineering and NC DOT can say, you know, you're going to have to close this driveway as part of a review. I can't say that they're going to say that, but that's something that they can say through the review process outside of the rezoning. I was just pointing out that right now, the use, or the zoning on the property is general use HB, which allows anything with very limited review, you know, especially reusing the existing building. By doing the GBL, they've limited some uses that are allowed. They've come up with some conditions of approval, but whatever happens there, if it's a full redevelopment, will be subject to review of driveway permits and other things that will require landscaping and all those things.
Some kind of review, I guess I could be satisfied with that, but I don't want drivers to be cursing the planning board as they try to get into that intersection.
I can't promise that either.
Like they already have problems right now. I mean, I think the developer has to be sensitive to that issue.
So since we have, since we called the petitioner, we're going to let you speak to address that.
Luke Dickey with Stimel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200 with Salem 27101.
Thank you.
As representative for the petitioner, they'd like to obviously move forward with the limited use zoning. They don't have a real site plan at this point as they're working through with what the end-user would be, so there's nothing they can really bring forward. And as Mr. Murphy has mentioned, it is zone HB, so a ton of uses go there already by rights today without any of the review. And they have agreed to limit their access on Reynolda right now at this point. That is a full access to just a right-in. And so then when you go through the driveway permit requirements, whenever a site plan gets submitted, that'll be reviewed then from a Fair Lawn perspective as well.
And just for real clarification, you said when a site plan gets submitted for review?
Yep, and that, obviously that site plan would go through the city staff.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion? All right? Thank you. I closed the public hearing. Sorry, public hearing is closed.
I move that the planning board finds that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. All in favor? That's unanimous?
And I further move that the planning board recommends approval of W 3421 with the presented conditions. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is B5, case W 3423. This is a request on about a half acre on the east side of North Broad Street and the west side of North Spring Street to change zoning from LO and HB to PB special use. This is a photo of the subject property looking across North Broad Street. So the building is actually on two levels and this is the view from Broad Street. And then there's another building on the property that fronts on Spring Street. This is a picture of that building and you can see a driveway access next to the building. That building is proposed to remain on the petitioner's site plan, which you can see here. That building remains, the existing building fronting on Broad Street remains. They'll restripes some parking and add a dumpster enclosure and do some other striping for traffic circulation. The area plan recommends this property for mixed, for a mixture of uses. Staff believes that this is a good location for PB zoning. It's adjacent to other PB zone properties. It's well-served by transit and sidewalks within an urban street network. And so we recommended approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this opposition to this recommendation? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I further move that the planning board recommend approval of 3423.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Brian. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last item on the consent agenda is B6, case W 3424. This is a request on the east side of South Broad Street, about two acres to rezone property from RS9 to RM8S. This is an existing or former location for a church by the Salvation Army, which you can see in this photo. And then this is another photo of the kind of northern portion of the property. It's just on the other side of this chain link fence where you see the zoning sign. This is the site plan that was submitted by the petitioner. The existing Salvation Army building is proposed to remain and then they would add two eight-unit multifamily buildings on the northeastern portion of the site. I believe they would do a little bit of realignment of the driveways down here on Broad Street. And then these are elevations that were submitted by the petition. I'm not sure how well you can see those. The area plan recognizes this site as just outside Southeast Gateway Activity Center, recommends institutional use for the property. Our analysis is that while it's not entirely consistent with the area plan, the density of the proposed residential uses is comparable to the RS zoning in the surrounding neighborhood. And then the daycare is consistent with the history of the institutional use that has been there for a number of years. So staff recommends approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Yeah, a question about the site. It may have to be answered by the developer. In looking at the parking space and realizing that this is a childcare center, it looks like the one number I can find in here is serving about 108 children. There are about 750 trips, you know, divide that in half for morning drop-off and half for evening pickup. What is the flow of the traffic that will be coming in and how that will again affect Broad Street along the way? Is there, is there a plan for the flow of the traffic going through a parking lot? Because it looks like the parking lot is also accommodating the residents that are going to be in the three apartment or the 16 units in the three buildings. Is that correct as well? Or do they have separate parking that I'm not seeing?
Right, the parking area is shared between the residential uses or the residential use and the daycare use.
Right. So what, how do you, what's the projected flow of the, of the drop-off and pickup?
Thank you, Mr. Brian. My name is Bryce Sheerburn, 406 Granville Drive, Winston Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Two issues. First of all, the site plan we prepared shows separate parking calculations for the residential and daycare use. Typically, when you undertake parking assessments and traffic flows based upon the standard engineering guides, you end up with inflated numbers. If you look at this rationally, based upon the programmatic function of the daycare, this is not a daycare. This does not allow circulation of traffic and drop-off. This is an early childhood education facility similar to several others that are operated and maintained by the same operator family services. It has 108 students. The parents are required to come onto the site, park their cars, and walk their children in. This is not a staged arrival. This is a classroom condition. What we find in discussions with their staff is that you will find one family member conveying multiple children. There are also other means of these children accessing these programs, via community vehicles. So the traffic counts that are shown based upon the engineering guidelines appear to be extremely overstated. Our analysis suggests that there will probably be, in the morning cycle, less than 75 trips based upon the relationship or the ratio between cars and kids and cars, because none of these, or very few of these, are one child per car. And they come in the morning and they leave in the afternoon, just like a school cycle. With respect to the residential uses, we have designed and developed the parking ratios required in the building code to meet those residential needs. So there are, there is in fact a surplus of parking. I think the daycare requirement is 60 and we're providing 66. We have met the obligation with respect to the residential. And our residential design is looking at a sort of a different kind of housing stock size in that we are not looking at large units with multiple cars and multiple family members. You know, we are trying to create an affordable housing element in a GMA2 zone that is transit center-driven. There's a bus line. We are looking at service employees. We are looking at populations that are now underserved and quality housing. So we do not believe that there is any impact. Broad Street does have a surplus of trip amounts and the Department of Transportation's recent move to put a traffic signal at the corner of Salem and Broad Street, we think enhances and improves the transportation flow and the traffic flow. So it does not appear to us to be an issue. And I would suggest, again, that the trip counts generated by just looking at those standard tables do not really apply in this particular...
So you're saying they're overstated by over a hundred percent?
Well, I think they're what, a 700 trips?
Well, I mean, if you look at three...
Thinking about it logically, thinking about it logically, assuming that every kid, 108 kids, came in one car.
That'd be a hundred.
108 in the morning, 108 in the afternoon. So it is...
I'll have to ask Mr. Corley something. I came up with that then.
You know, that's, look at a standard traffic engineering ratios and, you know, I think that there are obviously reasonable interpretations thereof, but I think based upon the actual factual operation of it, that even if a child was going there in a single car and going there in the morning, getting picked up for lunch, coming back again, we would not...
Yeah. Now, is this going to be operated like the other Head Start sites and things like that? So they do use buses and things like that as well, aren't they?
I mean, we've been very sensitive to this from the community outreach part. The Washington Park neighborhoods representatives expressed some of the same concerns, although their concerns were more related to the residential... although their concerns are more related to the residential component. And, you know, we believe it's a super excellent use that the South Central Area Plan, you know, generally promotes renovation and adaptive reuse of buildings as opposed to greenfield. And, you know, we think this is the right spot to continue a tradition of institutional use down there that's been going on for twenty-some years with Salvation Army.
Yeah. Well, thanks for.
Sure thing.
clarifying that. And you agree with that traffic analysis and its difference from what you have in the report?
Well, we use the industry standard ITE manual to calculate trips per day. We're not traffic experts. But that's what usually appears. When you see trips per day or trips in the peak hour in the staff report, they appear from the industry standard manual. And we're basing, we're using whatever their calculation standards are. You know, sometimes it's by square footage, sometimes it's by student. Sometimes it's by whether you have a matinee showing of them at a movie theater. Those are the numbers that we're using in the staff report.
And you're using all potential successor uses, permitted uses, at their maximum, you know, level of use too. So this use may not be there forever. It may be a successor use.
Well, and keep in mind, I mean, just to reiterate what Desmond did say, you know, we do use what the industry standard is based on square footages, based on occupancy and the number of students, based on the multifamily use to generate that number. But, you know, also, if you look at South Broad Street as a whole, not saying that, you know, a use in and of itself can't exacerbate an issue, but it doesn't appear to be much of an issue there now. Level of Service D on South Broad Street is thirteen thousand eight hundred trips per day. And right now, it's only at sixty-four hundred.
Now, I'm not worried about the trips on Broad Street, and I never said that. I'm worried more about stacking, getting in there if there were to be three hundred trips in a morning drop-off that was time limited. And I'm not hearing that from the applicant, so I don't, I don't have any concern about it. In fact, I applaud them for the intense development here and think they ought to look further south along there too, because there's many opportunities for more intense development right along Broad Street.
I don't want to give away their secrets, but they are.
Good.
I think you just did. Thank you.
I would just add that even though quantitatively this may well wind up being minor, the creativity that provides a working parent to live in this area and walk their child across the lot for daycare in the morning, to me is splendid and to be commended.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, the public hearing was already closed, so is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And I further move that the planning board recommend W. thirty-four twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous as well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman and members of the boards, give me a second while I navigate to our next case, which is W. thirty-four twenty-two. This one is not on the consent agenda. It is a request to rezone property from RS-nine GI and GI special use to LI limited use. The site is about nine point four acres on the north side of Kestner Mill Road at the northern terminus of Blue Rock Court. This is the location map for the subject property. You can see the subject request is in yellow. The green buffer area is where we send our property notifications to let people know that property is proposed to be rezoned. And then this is just a location showing you where the property is in relation to the growth management areas. This is the subject property at the end of Blue Rock Court. So there's already a building under construction in some of the subject property, which is currently zoned GI, I think. And then this is a view looking south of Blue Rock Court, back toward Kestner Mill Drive. You can see kind of some of these smaller scale industrial-type buildings on either side of Blue Rock Court. The subject property is in the background of this photo. You can, you can kind of see the zoning sign. There on the left side, which is the north side of Kestner Mill Road, is a portion of a strip of land that's zoned GIS, GI special use, which is basically intended for a buffer yard. So when you see, you know, that hedge of tall evergreen plants that's in that special use, GI zoning district. And then here's another angle of that looking straight, straight across Kestner Mill Road. That buffer yard is on the left and then some of the subject property is in the middle and to the right in this photo. This is another view of the subject property looking west on Kestner Mill Road. Again, just behind the zoning sign, you can see the existing GIS buffer yard. The area plan recommends industrial use for the great majority of the land on the north side of Kestner Mill Road, once you get past Kirk Road. So the request would be consistent with the area plan recommendation in that sense. Our analysis is that the proposed industrial zoning is consistent with the recommendation of the area plan. A large portion of the site is already zoned, general industrial and general industrial special use. That's the buffer yard. It would reduce the intensity of the, of the general industrial portion of the site by rezoning it to limited industrial. A couple of things that have changed since you all got the information in the agenda book is that the applicant has agreed or proposed to remove the used freight terminal from their list of proposed uses. And they also have proposed to install a thirty-foot type-three buffer yard along the entire eastern edge of the zoning area. That buffer yard will be planted to the standard of a twenty-foot type-three buffer yard. And so the way the buffer yards work is the narrower the buffer yard, the more densely packed it is with vegetation. So a twenty-foot buffer yard per one hundred linear feet requires two deciduous trees, eighteen primary evergreen plants, and twelve evergreen shrubs. So that is what they're going to have in a wider area, thirty feet instead of twenty feet on the eastern side.
Can you, can you show us that, where that buffer is going to be?
Sure.
Because the buffer is in the middle of the property right now.
Yeah, so right now, they're only proposing to rezone an existing buffer in this portion. The rest of it is going to be what's there now unless they chose to rezone it again. So the eastern side of their request is a new thirty-foot type-three buffer yard. So I'd imagine that this would give them the ability to just move that buffer yard and have it back here closer to the RS-nine properties.
Are you addressing the buffer on Kestner Mill?
You mean the existing special use buffer yard?
Well, there isn't.
This part?
That buffer is there.
Right.
What about the buffer for the new part that they're asking?
Well, there's not a buffer required against right-of-way. There would be a street yard if they put motor vehicle surface area between their building and Kestner Mill Road. But there's not a buffer yard that's required against the right-of-way.
And Mr. Corley, the existing buffer yard that's not part of this request would remain?
Yes, wherever it was not, wherever the zoning was not changed, it would have to.
Any other questions for Mr. Corley?
Yeah, I had a question about the roadway. Looking at the, one of the maps, the one that goes with the area plan update, it shows access from, from four twenty-one on Kestner Mill Road. But I don't think that's built yet. Is that something that is planned to be built in the future? Or is that, am I misreading the map?
I don't think so.
Kestner Mill does come to a dead end, correct?
And, yeah, there would not be any, I think that's just the way the colors on the map work. I think it's the white blends in with the white. But it, you know, right now, wherever existing Kestner Mill ends, it's not proposed to be tied into four twenty-one.
The main access to this site will be from Haynes Mall Boulevard.
In Johnstown.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Corley? Thank you, Mr. Corley. So we are going to go into a public hearing because we do have opposition in this case. As a reminder, for all public hearings, each side will have a total of twelve minutes. First, we'll hear from the proponents, and in this case, we have Steve Cossey. Again, Mr. Cossey, for the record, if you state your name, address, and zip code, please.
Steve Cossey, and today I am here for Salem Creek Properties, not Allied Design, forty-seven twenty, Kestner Mill Road, two seven one zero three. Also here with me today is Donald Saylor. He's here as well. Gene Lauter is not in attendance. We've owned our property about sixteen years, and I think the Saylor's going on twenty years probably plus. Just looked at a variety of uses over the years, trying to figure out how to make residential work. We've been staying in touch with planning staff in the area plan. I think in August of last year, the updated version came back and recommended LI for, for the entire area north of Kestner Mill. Finally, got ourselves together and decided to resubmit a petition. We had actually filed O. six for a general use. I think that was right before we bought it, general use, general industrial. I think we ended up withdrawing that petition. But, but we're back now, hopefully in conformance with the recommendations of the area plan. Gene's property, as Desmond mentioned, is kind of downgrading the zoning, if you will. But it does eliminate the fifty-foot buffer on his current property. The rezoning of our triangle or rectangle back along four twenty-one would give him a little more latitude and development of his property and push that buffer east. So we did meet with a few of the neighbors. They're here today as well. I think you have a summary of the meeting we had last Tuesday night. Basically, they're very familiar with the history of the property. They've been there a while. We talked a little bit about what the potential uses could be or would be. We tried to explain and understand the buffers. In addition to the buffer, I'll just point out that against the residential properties, there would also be a forty-foot building setback per the, you know, ordinances. So we would have a forty-foot building setback in addition to the buffer, where they overlap. But that's, that's basically all I have to say. If you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Cossey?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I was asking a question about the buffer right along Kestner Mill there. I mean, I love the way your conifers really, you know, cover that other area because, you know, you've got these little residential homes here, not little, but you've got nice residential homes here. And then, you know, you've got pretty active business in there. It looks like you're doing good. And, and I didn't know what plans you had for these two other pieces coming in there and if there was a way that they could be sort of screened from that and still allow you to access to it along the way.
Are you kind of thinking in addition to the normal street yard that would be along the right-of-way between the parking and right-of-way?
Well, this normal screening, is, is that necessarily tall like you have with the other area?
Two, two trees and some shrubs, basically.
Yeah, no, I was talking something similar to what you've done so well down the rest of that. Of course, I don't know. I mean, if you're bringing a driveway in there, you can't do it. I mean, or there may not be room enough.
The properties are relatively narrow. There, there are multiple parcels now. You know, obviously getting the zoning in place will then allow us to think and plan about what to do next.
Yeah.
Whether they're sold in total or developed separately. They're relatively limited width, as you pointed out. I don't know if you have something in mind beyond.
No, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the houses across from that. And if you've got major manufacturing going on down in there. Because it, because it is, it is hidden by those, the conifers further down, because it's sort of in that back area there that works nicely. Well, anyway, we'll, we'll talk more.
All right. All right, I don't see any other proponents. Anyone else want to speak as a proponent? All right, so in opposition, I think it's Andrea, Andrea Cox first. Again, state your name and address and zip code for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Cox. I live at forty-seven seventy-three Kestner Mill Road, two seven one zero three. I've lived on Kestner Mill Road all my life. And I actually am really close to the rezoning. There's just this tiny little slither of RS-nine between me and the proposed rezoning. So it's going to affect me. My property and the land that my mom owns next door to me has been in our family for six generations. I understand that there's development and I'm all for that. But my concerns with this rezoning are that it's a general, it's just general. There's no specific use being indicated here. So, you know, what's going to actually go there? Nobody's been able to tell us that. And from the discussions that we've had with the current owners, they may even end up just reselling the land for a profit. So that really leaves us in the dark as homeowners as to what's going to happen. The potential negative impact on another industrial zoning, I opposed the first industrial zoning, but I know that it's your recommendation that my side of the road go industrial. But that leaves me in a really bad place. And I have to deal with noise, dust, heavy trucks. So that brings me to the traffic. The traffic on our road, we're dealing with large dump trucks now, eighteen-wheelers. And I'm not kidding when I say eighteen-wheelers constantly throughout the day and even at night. Delivery trucks constantly up and down the road. More industrial zoning is only going to bring on more of that. I understand that you're going to take the freight out of this proposal, but that doesn't stop the eighteen-wheelers that are already up and down the road. In addition to that, we just had apartments proposed for across the street, forty-eight units. Can you imagine the traffic that that's going to bring to our road? Our road is still a very residential road. It barely fits two cars. So me and the eighteen-wheeler going down that road is not fun because there's no lines and nobody knows what side they're supposed to be on. One of my biggest issues, though, with the rezoning, I'll say, is that the impact of my property value. You know, this has created a hardship for us. My mom, me, my dad died about ten years ago. I'm there taking care of her, her property, and we have businesses now on both sides of us. And it's just enclosing us. I mean, we feel very isolated and devalued. I know that it's your plan for that to be all industrial, and that's fine. And I would sell and get out of there if I could. But nobody wants to give me any money for my house. They say my house is worth nothing to them. All they want is my land. So I would just say, put yourself in my shoes and, you know, know that I've worked really hard and my mom's worked really hard and my dad, who's not even with us anymore, worked really hard for the land we own and the house we have. And right now, we have people telling us our house is worth nothing. We might as well burn it down and sell the land because that's all they want. So I know it's your plan to approve it. I know that's the recommendation of the planning board. If that's the case, if you're going to approve it and continue to put industrial on my side of the road, do whatever it takes to give me a buffer so that I can at least live like I live on a residential street. At least give me that. And that's all I have to say.
I have a question for them.
Mr. Hicks?
Opposition. How many other industrial impacts have you experienced over the, say, the last fifteen to twenty years on Kestner Mill Road and your side of the road with this one also being proposed?
Yeah, so when the, as I said, I, we opposed the first industrial zoning.
Which was?
It did go through, and in the process of all the grading, there was red dirt dust that ruined our siding on our house, the porch that we had just painted, sidewalks, things like that. We had to fight to get that buffer that you so praised. It was, we were told that's going to go in, but then it didn't. And we had to come back and fight the person who bought the land to put the buffer in. It is a great buffer and, and it does help. But, you know, irregardless, when you've got eighteen-wheelers and dump trucks going up and down the street, you know, there's also a large business, a national-owned business on that road. And they have probably thirty trucks. And they fly up and down our road, especially in the evening when they're wanting to get home and they are dropping off their trucks. And there's a blind spot on the hill right where this property that's being rezoned is. And you better not be crossing the road when one of those trucks is coming by. It's not residential friendly anymore. I mean, it just isn't.
Thank you.
March of two thousand.
March of two thousand.
Was when the initial rezoning to GI and GIS from RS-nine was.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. You had something to say, Mr. Lamb?
I was just going to ask, can you point out where your property is?
Uh, yeah, so. Yeah, so, I'm not sure I can.
It's...
I'm the first house because the property between me and the rezoning is...
It's that lot right there. Her mother is the piece of property. Can you see the mouse?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. There.
And then her mom's piece is the piece of property that surrounds it.
Got you.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Ms. Cox, so you're familiar with the buffer that they currently have along there? Is that the kind of buffer you're talking about? Because I think that's what they're proposing to do on that side.
Steve has been very open and he did graciously have us over to his office and, you know, like I said, he's right. He's going with what the recommendations of, you know, the city are. This is what they want, so I get that. And he's been very gracious, but I just want to, you know, I just ask, you're the experts. I just ask that you please make sure that there's a good buffer there. You know, he's explained the buffer to us. I believe that he mentioned something like eighteen evergreens every hundred linear feet or whatever. You know, a lot of that's, you know, foreign to me, but, you know, you just imagine your house and what would you want up next to it?
Absolutely. Well, and let me see if I can correct you on some of this and the staff can help as well. When these area plans are done and recommend this, there is a strong effort to try to get citizens to come out. So, it isn't that we're the experts. The city is asking all the neighbors and everyone for input in that. When the area plan finally comes out, it, our hope for the planning board is that everybody's had input into it and then we vote on it based that there has been. So, you know, I'm sure there was time in there when citizens had some kind of input into that. And even though the staff may say that this is a good thing right now, it's still up to us to make those kind of decisions along the way. But there was a time when you did have some input into that. So, the other issue, which was very clear to me when I was out there that you've also brought up, is we have a narrow, unmarked road. And I don't see Jeff Fanzler out here and I don't know what transportation specialists we have out in the audience there, but Chris, what are the options in terms of working with the city or whatever to make that a little bit safer, a little bit wider or whatever that needs to happen? I mean, you've got a plan for industry there, which is fine, great. We're all signing on to that, but it's running through a residential area that isn't going to change because those apartments over there are very intense right across from that. That probably isn't going to change anything. And as you say, there may be adding more. So, how can we work the thoroughfare out to work for everybody?
Well, unfortunately, you are correct. There is no one here from transportation and I'm not going to pretend to be a transportation expert, but I can answer in the perspective that generally speaking, unless there is a bond initiative or unless there is a petition to do something and there's money that's put into it by residents, most of the time, street improvements are done via construction activity. So, you know, in this case right here, the subject property, let's say that it were to get recommended for rezoning by the planning board and it go to the elected body and it get rezoned and at some point, subsequent to that, they come in to get a building permit. As part of that, more than likely, they would either have to make a pavement and lieu or they'd have to widen their portion of the street on their side. Same thing, anything like from this subject property back to the east until you get to Kirk Road, most of that, you know, if Ms. Cox and her family and everyone else would want to sell and someone would come in here and develop that, at that point is when the road improvements would be made. It would be widened. If on the aerial photos, I'm fairly certain, looking at on the south side of Kestrel Mill Road at Tatten Park, there was a widening and its curb and gutter with sidewalks there. So, again, when Tatten Park came through, that section was widened whenever that was done. So, it's generally through development. Short of that, I don't think there would be any remedy unless it was something that the elected officials asked Winston DOT to take a look at and then found some money to put into it to be able to make improvements.
And Ms. Cox, the next step that this goes to is the city council and your councilman, I believe, is Dan Bessie in this area and there is room that you can appeal to him about, you know, using city resources to try to help out in there and to work with the developer and things like that. So, that may not be something we have any control. We don't have a budget. But, you know, that is an option as you look forward to that. And I hope these trees will meet that other requirement that you were talking about as well.
Short of street widening, which is obviously a very expensive thing, are there traffic calming measures like painting stripes, like relooking at the speed limit, et cetera?
Those kind of things can be done. They're done by petition sometimes. I think there's a pot of money for some, for some of those types of projects. I don't generally think that the city looks at citizen participation from a financing standpoint. I think there's a pool of money. Again, that's something that could be looked at, but that's something else that has to be done through DOT, through a petition with DOT, and there's a process whereby you can go and do that. The other thing that could be done is, again, through conversations with a council member. I mean, if there's an issue with speeds and those kind of things with vehicles, you know, it's a real easy conversation with council member, you know, to ask if there's a way that there could be some beefed-up enforcement as far as traffic and that kind of thing in that area as well. Because again, if you have large trucks moving at high rates of speed, it does pose definitely a safety issue, especially whenever you're on a narrow street, so.
So, who would be best on our staff to help her come to know what that process would be to follow?
Reach out to the deputy director of transportation, Jeff Fanzler. And in absence of Jeff, also you could reach out to Rod Ring on our staff. He's operations and I believe he's the person that actually coordinates efforts for traffic calming and those kind of things. I believe that as part of that, they can also reach out to the police department and ask them to take a look at speeds and those kind of things as well.
Yeah, we've done that, so.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Thank you, Ms. Cox. We also have Lynn Wood Davis in opposition. I think we have about six minutes left.
Yeah, I have eight.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Wood Davis. I live at eight-twelve Sylvan Road, Winston-Salem, two seven one oh-four. And I'm not in opposition. I just wanted to come and let you know I represent and am the developer with the apartments that are going to be across the street from them and y'all are all aware that it's there. We're going through our permitting process now and we don't have a site plan and whatever they're doing, their rezoning seems reasonable to us, but we would have a concern that our entrance is lined up with any sort of traffic. We wouldn't want a traffic conflict with what's being proposed across the street. So, I just want to bring that to your attention.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to ask a question.
All right.
Mr. Corley. So, the GIS was approved in two thousand, but wasn't there a proposal in two thousand and six, I think, that got withdrawn?
Right, that's the proposal that Mr. Cozy referenced earlier that was withdrawn. I don't know the particulars of that request or why it was withdrawn. I think, let me get to my report.
I believe at the time it may have been inconsistent with the area plan and also was just general use. I'm not sure if it was this entire piece or may have just been a smaller piece of this piece.
Yeah, that was a general use request to GI.
GI general.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Corley, I would ask that someone speak with Ms. Cox before she leaves to make sure the names that Mr. Murphy mentioned, that she has those numbers, please. All right.
All right, I move that the planning board finds that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Lamb, a second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to state that I don't see this as consistent and the reason is because it seems to me to be inappropriate encroachment of industrial land onto residential land. And even with the buffer, it's still encroaching more towards the residential property and I just see a real mismatch, especially as Ms. Cox explained the issues there. And it may, you know, there is an upside to this, which is it's going from GI to LI and I think that's a real good thing, but it's still encroachment and it might be more palatable, I think, if we had a site plan and we knew what was going in there because there may be things that would work reasonably well here, but if we don't know, there could be more big eighteen-wheelers. And that's the thing I think is really inappropriate and that's the type of encroachment onto residential that I think just doesn't work here.
There's a previous motion and second on the floor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes five to three.
On consistency.
On consistency, yes.
And then I further move that the planning board recommends approval of thirty-four
Sir's second.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
It goes forward without a recommendation.
Without a recommendation.
Yep.
All right, I believe the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the UDO Clear Code. So, I will...
Thank you, Desmond. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Next item is UDO two ninety-one, which is a text amendment proposed by planning and development staff to reorganize the UDO as recommended in the UDO code assessment, which you all received in two thousand and eighteen. Just to give some background on this item, in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, efforts began on preparing a code assessment for the UDO. As the board was previously informed, the purpose of this assessment was to find ways to make the ordinance more user-friendly and visual appealing since our code is twenty-five years old and has been subject to nearly three hundred text amendments at this point. So, staff hired code right planners out of Durham as they're experts in renovating and evaluating unified development ordinances in North Carolina and they prepared the statement, the assessment, which also included several public input opportunities. As I mentioned, the planning board did accept Code Right's report in November of last year and directed the staff to immediately start implementing the report recommendations, the first of those being to reorganize the existing UDO content to make it more user-friendly. Staff and Code Right spent the first half of this year working on this task and a revised UDO draft was completed in August. No changes to any existing UDO provisions were made as part of this process. Rather, existing text was simply moved around and ordinance sections were renumbered, but we did not make any substantive changes to the actual policies. So, the revised UDO goes from what you see on the left-hand side of the slide here, which was a system of four chapters and multiple articles, to a much clearer ten-chapter layout, which again is designed to have the most used ordinance information at the front of the document and the least used information at the rear of the document in an effort to make it easier on our users. The new UDO also includes improvements to the appearance of the ordinance and the graphic style set that you see on this page was developed and used during this project. The revised UDO also includes numerous other improvements, which I'll show you some illustrations of on the following slides, but in brief, the first is that this is now a fully searchable document. Second is that there's a table of contents with bookmarks for each section of the code. There's also hyperlinked cross-references throughout the entirety of the document to the tune of over one thousand individual references that had to be plugged in. And there's also an index of topics and keywords that's also hyperlinked to those sections of the code. I will tell you before we get into some examples that after adoption, the new UDO will be maintained on its own website, udoclearcode.com, and that link has already been sent out to various stakeholders and in fact is in the digital version of your agenda book for this month. Again, you can see from this illustration here that there is now a search bar and you can type in any word and it'll show you all instances of the document, much like any other PDF would. There's a detailed bookmarked table of contents that goes through each heading and subheading of the ordinance for easy navigation to those direct sections. As mentioned previously, there's over one thousand individual hyperlinks scattered throughout the document. And this is a screenshot of the index of topics and keywords. Just a brief word on public outreach for this project. The staff sent out the revised UDO to stakeholders for comments in August and we received positive feedback from everyone who decided to contact us about this. We discussed this with the board at its August work session and again at its September work session in brief and believe the board had positive thoughts on this project as well. We also presented this to the Chamber of Commerce's Construction Industry Council and the Forsyth County Development Forum in September and received many positive comments from folks who would be affected by this. Also at your place, I received a communication from Eric Bushnell of the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance this morning and the Neighborhood Alliance does support this project and also looks forward to a future phase where we go in and add some graphical content and other improvements. With that, the staff's recommendation is that the board does adopt the new UDO Clear Code with an effective date of January first, two thousand and twenty. That will give us time to make sure this gets through the city council and the county commissioners and gives us time to get our staff trained on that. And once the new ordinance is in place, then staff will begin a series of text amendments that actually makes substantive changes to UDO recommendations as recommended in the code assessment. But of course, each of those text amendments will have its own public involvement process and the board will be briefed on those on an individual basis. Lastly, if anyone wishes to see the ordinance, I did bring a copy today and I will be glad to have that available.
It's a lot thinner than the other one.
Believe it or not, three hundred pages thinner, but it's still seven hundred plus. So, I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
I did look at the mobile site and I think the corrections were made, so the layout is much better. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll just add, Kurt, that from the Forsyth County Commercial Realtors Association, I've heard nothing but positive feedback and thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
This is for adoption. Again, I think you need to open the public hearing and see if there is anyone that is here to speak in support or...
Is anyone here in support or opposition? All right, declaring or not, I declare the public hearing closed.
And I move that we recommend adoption of UDO Clear Code, of whatever you just described.
UDO two ninety-one.
Two ninety-one.
There's been a motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bryan. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, and Amy will be coming to present the parks and open space update.
Good evening. Here to talk about the Parks and Open Space Plan update. To start us off, the overarching goal when we talk about parks and open spaces defined in Legacy two thousand and thirty as providing parks and recreation facilities that meet the needs of the residents at accessible locations throughout the county and that's sort of what our guiding principle is in regards to this plan. The purpose of the plan is to further the efforts that were initiated in the two thousand and six Parks and Open Space Plan. Again, this is a city and county plan, so it's county-wide and it's high-level, so we provide basic recommendations that then the parks and recreation departments within the county and the city can then move forward on. We did reassess the previous recommendations to see if they still held water. As regard to objectives, the first three listed there are carryovers from the first plan. The fourth and fifth one are new and they talk about access and accessibility, which I'll talk about a little bit more further on.
Can you go back one more? Can you go back one?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
In regards to public input, as this was a county-wide plan, we held meetings in both the city and county and sort of spread out throughout both the city and county. We had two county meetings, one at Lewisville Library and one at Triad Park. We had three city meetings, one at Bathabra Park, one at Salem Lake, and one at Southside Library. These meetings were drop-in for a two-hour period provided to allow folks convenience to come in at their leisure to provide comments. There were five sort of boards that posed questions to them and then they could provide their comments on posts and stick them on the board or they could write on maps. We also had comment sheets available and staff was there to talk with folks. We also did an online survey that asked questions about current use and desired future use. And how we got the message out about these meetings is that we used our departmental email list as well as the city and county webpages, the city and county Facebook pages. And something new that we did specifically for this, for the online survey, as it was done in November and December for a two-month period, we actually sent out 15,000 postcards that were given out with the festival of lights, since that's a regional draw as folks were waiting to go through the festival lights. It had the survey address there, they could use their mobile devices and provide comments. And the survey took about five, 10 minutes to complete. Once we did the, got our recommendations together and have a draft plan, we held two more meetings at Bathabra Park and Salem Lake to provide folks an opportunity to comment on those recommendations. And again, folks were told about or advertised about these meetings through social media as well as email. And we also included Nextdoor, which is a different social media site besides Facebook. And we also sent out emails to those who participated in the first round of meetings. So those folks would let you know, could know about those meetings and come in if they wanted to. Just to go over a couple of the comments received, the first being about what amenities are being used currently. The top is the city, the bottom is county. Number one for both is walking trails. And then the top five is actually the same for both city and county, it's just a slightly different order. When asked what the greatest concern was facing both the city and the county, both folks said for both city and county was maintenance, overwhelmingly maintenance, particularly with the city. In regards to where new parks should be located, first for the city, it said downtown was the prime location. Since this survey has been done, Second Street Park has opened up, so they've gotten a new park in downtown. Then the second response was no new parks needed for the city. The number one response for county was no new parks needed. As far as any new parks developed in the future, people said they wanted to see community parks or neighborhood parks. They had a tied score there. And basically, the difference between a community park and a neighborhood park is that community parks are multifaceted, multifunctional. Think they have rec centers and ball fields, whereas neighborhood parks serve just sort of the neighborhood within them, within about a quarter-mile to half-mile and have things like picnic shelters and playgrounds, those sorts of amenities. And asked what new amenities they would like to see in the future, folks said walking trails, open space, playgrounds, picnic shelters, dog parks, top five. It's the same top five that were, as for amenities that are currently being used. In addition to the public input, we did do an analysis looking at the existing park system. We looked at, we did a one-mile radius analysis to see where there are holes at. And then the reason we use one mile was because one mile equates to about a 20-minute walk for the average individual. Again, we talk about accessibility, that's at a comfortable rate for folks can walk to a park or bike to a park. It's particularly important within the urban, sort of citywide developed area. In regards to city park facilities, there were a couple, about seven spots, seven areas that were lacking, showing to be lacking. That would be sort of the northwest Winston, southwest Winston, south Winston, and then sort of around the periphery between Rural Hall, Walker Town, and Kernersville. In regards to the county, there was three main areas. One was Blue's Lake, which hopefully will be addressed in the coming year or two. And then Abbott's Creek area towards High Point and then along the Yakon River, which is an underutilized resource that we have here in the county. So we took this information we have here in regards and also took the public input that we got, as well as looking at what has been previously proposed throughout both the previous park plan as well as the area plan process. And we combined those and looked at that. And what we came up with is what you see here, which is map four in the plan. And all those little yellow, golden, round dots that you see there, they're all basically been, parks that have been proposed in previous plans, whether the previous 2006 plan or an area plan. And what you'll see is that they're basically located exactly in those places that were lacking facilities based off that one-mile needs radius. And so therefore, we felt that no new parks were needed. We didn't need to propose new park facilities since they've already been sort of been addressed in these previous plans. In addition, we felt that the main focus for the next coming year should really be maintenance, not so much on expanding the system, but maintaining what we have and enhancing what we have. In regards to facilities and amenities, when we talk about facilities, we're talking about recreation centers and ball fields and dog parks, those sorts of things. Amenities would be things like signage, lighting, shade, canine facilities, those sorts of recommendations. And these are basically taken directly from the public comment. We looked at what we heard from folks and we made sure that those recommendations were incorporated. There is a huge emphasis on collaboration and public involvement in stating that when you go out and you do a master plan or you go out and you rehab, renovate a park, talk to the public around there. Make sure you're getting the facilities that they want to have specifically in that neighborhood. Also, if you're doing mountain bike trails or a skate park, bring in those communities as well to make sure you're getting the facilities that they need. There have been a fair amount of carryover from the previous plans, simply because this plan was done in 2006. It's only been 13 years and we had a major recession in between that time. So a lot of those recommendations still held water. We also incorporate policy, planning, and programming recommendations to include things like sustainability, inclusivity, growth, and then again, another public outreach, directly conditioned on public outreach. Other sections within the plan, we have two new sections that we brought out. One was deferred maintenance. Again, hearing from folks that deferred maintenance was a major issue. It really wasn't discussed in the previous plan. There was a couple paragraphs way back in the back, like the third to last page of the plan for the city, but otherwise, it really wasn't discussed. And so we brought that out and we brought it to the forefront. During, when we were doing this plan, the city's Recreation and Parks Department was also doing a city deferred maintenance study. So we incorporated findings from that, that looked at the parks, recreation centers, pools, and golf courses and provided recommendations on how deferred maintenance needs. We brought information from that study into this plan, sort of linked them together and really it's sort of solidified that need for deferred maintenance that we heard from the public. There's also information from the county. In terms of accessibility, there was general recommendations in the previous plan, sort of generally talking, you know, connect to park, connect parks to sidewalks and greenways, but nothing really specific. And we heard a lot of folks saying, I would like to, one, connect to the park, I'd walk or bike or take transit, pretty soon scooter, to that, to the park instead of having to get in my car and drive a half-mile down the road and to use the facility. That's what we talked about for external. For internal, folks said, I would like to get through the park, making sure the park facilities are ADA accessible and also inclusive for all users, no matter their basically physical capabilities. And also, safety was a huge concern that we heard. So safety is also noted here in the accessibility chapter, incorporating SEPTED principles as well as talking with folks, seeing what is going on that's making folks feel unsafe. It's a lack of lighting, it's graffiti, what have you. And so you can track those. We've updated the funding and land acquisition chapter, incorporated some new avenues for funding beyond sort of the part of grants of the past. There's some new avenues out there. So we updated that. In terms of open space, we also updated that chapter as well. This is the new open space map that's incorporating the plan, which is map five. In this, we've updated, incorporated some of the, you know, we have new farmland preservation plan that's been done since the 2006 plan. We have a rural historic policy plan that was done. So incorporating some of that in there and also incorporate, we have new land conservation sites, new voluntary agricultural district sites. All of that was incorporated to update and bring it up to current, currently what we have. Just to let you know, this has gone before the city's Recreation and Parks Commission and they are in support of the plan. And I will answer any questions anyone has.
No comment. I really appreciate this because this is a part of our county and city as well. And I, my own neighborhood, I appreciate what Councilman McIntosh and Mr. Royster have done with Haynes Park because that makes that whole neighborhood marketable for the renters and for the, for the housing that goes in there. And that's just excellent. As I mentioned in work session though, the glaring omission in this analysis is what roles our schools play in open area and parks. And it's just unacceptable to me that the county commissioners don't consider that as part of funding of schools, that this should be part of the accessible access for recreation and walking and exercise when they fund a public school. It's my tax dollars either way, across the way, and that, there's a lot of acreage that's in that. And I really hope the next plan that comes out will show every school as being a park as well. And then there may be some leverage that the city council has when they have schools within that to talk about infrastructure and making this part of a local open space that is maintained by the school, not by Mr. Royster. But we already are putting money into this. It's, it's, people are saying we need it. They want to walk. Walking on the school property doesn't seem to be a huge issue if we can work out the little peculiarities in that. So I really encourage us to do it and appreciate the work that you all have done on this analysis.
I would, I would like to jump right on that train, George. The three words I wrote after having read your plan are schools for implementation. It's a huge underutilized resource. And we should proactively pursue greater levels of involvement.
Is the, is the concern on the school system's end of things, one of security? Is that, is that why, what they're saying is, well, you make it a park, it's open to the public, it's open to the public, we've got people wandering through and we've got security concerns about that? I, I don't know that that's the case. I'm just asking if that is why they're...
Yeah. In talking with Darrell Walker, he's, you know, he's on board with this and there is a recommendation for joint use agreements between both the city and the school system or the county and the school system to provide, you know, facilities in areas, particularly where there's not a lot of land. If you look on the, sort of the west side of Winston-Salem, there's not a lot of open land to create a park. And so turning to things like the school system or YMCA's, YWCA's, like Kernersville has done, to provide those facilities, it would be great. And then this plan really calls for that for the schools. So security is an issue, trying to keep, you know, the population separate, particularly when you're talking about elementary kids or middle school kids, you know, having that, you know, those populations, you know, separated is really their main concern.
Has any municipality had success in combining the two that we know of?
I can't see of any. I mean, there's been a lot of studies on joint use agreements and it's, it's really, I mean, it's a positive thing, but I can't think of any.
I was saying the 1950s Winston-Salem and Forsyth County schools was extremely successful as that. I value to this day the memories of my walking to Greenville School during the summer where the Parks and Recreation staff provided programs both on the ball fields and indoors. And it just went away.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look around the city and the county, there's lots of evidence of instances where you have a school adjacent to a public park. I mean, I'm thinking about, in my area of the county, there's multiple places where that's the case. And my, my political philosophy has me very much agreeing with George. As a parent of two small children in an elementary school though, you know, I also have concerns about legally the status of that area if you're opening it up as a park. I think you're just going to have to be careful and those dual-use agreements are going to be key in terms of the ability of the schools during certain time periods. And that's no different than any other public park where you say, okay, the park's open from sunup to sundown. You'll have to, you'll have to tweak those hours, I think, a little more if you're going to do it on a, on a school system.
The hours of operation don't need to overlap.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Amy, I appreciate the emphasis on maintenance because I think it's needed. But I also think that we shouldn't necessarily shut the door on any new parks. I think there's probably desires within the community that we haven't tapped, that we don't know about, that we didn't capture in this process for additional parks and also for recreation centers, because I know those are heavily used and at least some of them, the ones that I know are very heavily used and may want to look at that too as well.
And I may have missed this, or this may not have really been within the scope of what you guys were doing, but was there data in there about usage in terms of, okay, so you can look and say this park is underutilized and under-maintained and then it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing? Is nobody using it because it's not well-maintained or is it not being well-maintained because nobody's complaining about it, because nobody's there to see that it's...
And I asked that question in our, in our planning board meeting. And I think the east side was underutilized, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, typically, I mean, there was a survey, part of the survey, people could indicate what facilities they actually did use, whether it be rec centers or parks. And typically, you know, some of the east side facilities were underutilized based off that survey, granite. You go to some of them and the folks that use those facilities aren't typically folks that will come out to a public meeting or take an online survey. They're, you know, so they're heavily used, it's just trying to capture the input from those populations. And, you know, I know the city's Recreation, they keep up their own sort of usage numbers as well for them. But, but yeah. But in regards to your question about looking at both maintenance and also not, you know, turning down opportunities, you know, that's why, you know, we highlighted those seven areas for the city and there's three for the county because we want to say, you know, particularly like say the south, something happens in the south and there is some open land out there and someone wants to donate that land and it's next to the Old Salisbury landfill, which should be retiring probably the end of this plan. Don't pass up that opportunity, you know? Don't forsake that if those opportunities do come up. Just, you know, really look at more towards trying to tackle some of the maintenance issues before you go out and actively seek new places. But don't, don't, we don't want to have that message out there that we don't push anything aside if it makes sense, if there is a really great opportunity like what happened with Blue's, Blue's Creek there, Blue's Lake, having not pass off on that opportunity.
And that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna jump in and say is, and of course, you know, the, the recommendations are dealing with existing facilities, but we still have the identified needs through both the area plan process and this plan, which identifies where there are park needs. And if, and if there's a concerted effort on, you know, if we do another bond initiative, if we do anything else, we have the information in the plan where we can easily go see where we need them. It's just at this point, we're recommending that the, the key focus should be on those deferred maintenance needs and, you know, bringing things up to current standards versus going out and spending money for new parks. But again, if that's something that the citizenry says that they won't, I think the plan does a good job of looking at what we had in the previous plan, incorporating the park recommendations from our area plan processes into this plan, identifying where those needs are.
Are there certain parts in the city limit that's had no maintenance in a while versus others that have? Mr. Royster, it's good to see you, sir.
Pleasure to see you as well. William Royston, Recreation Parks Director, 100 East First Street, Winston-Salem, 27102. There isn't a park that we have any sort of development in. There isn't a park that we have any sort of development in that does not receive some sort of maintenance. And I was listening to the discussion earlier about some of the parks on the east side of town. We actually, those are some of the more heavily-used parks that we have in, in our park system. We have crews, maintenance crews, that typically spend all day long just at two or three park locations just to clean up, just to make sure that those facilities are ready to go for the, for the week. So every one of our facilities, even certain park locations where it's, where it's open space, we try to do, we do go in there and do some sort of maintenance to make sure that the vegetation is controlled. We try to do what we can to control invasive plant species, but so that if anyone were looking at that property, we look to use that property in the future for any sort of development, we're not making those, that process more difficult for ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions while, while he's here? All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing, so...
So would anyone, is anyone here would like to have any comments on this issue? All right, saying that, I declare the public hearing closed. I guess we need to go through a motion to move this forward?
Yeah, we, we need a motion for approval, and then what we will do is that at that point, it will get scheduled for city council committee to go to the county commissioners, and it will also, I believe, go to the small towns for their adoption as well, or not?
We've incorporated, the small towns, either they have an area plan, like say Tobacco Ville or Walker Town, those comments and recommendations were incorporated from that area plan. Also, Kernersville, Clemmons, Lewisville, they have their own plans, and so those, those plans have been talked about, at least linked into this.
So we'll just go to the city and county following this?
Thank you for that clarification.
I move that we recommend approval of the Parks and Open Space Plan update.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second, I wish to steal, all those in favor? Close the same sign. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Staff report?
Yes, sir, I do have a few items. First of all, as always, welcome to our council members, thanks for being here. Councilmember Larson, Councilmember CPO, Councilmember McIntosh. We do, just a couple informational items to remind you of. We have the kickoff meeting for the Smith Rentals Airport, Whittaker Park Strategic Plan, that's a week from tonight, 6:00 at Carver High School Auditorium. Also, coming up just a couple days after that is Community Roots Day on Saturday, October An item of interest to the planning board, we have a meeting set up for, I believe, it's the end of October, I can't remember the exact date, we're going to sit down with IS and work on the iPad implementation to go away from paper agenda books and move to iPads. So that has moved forward, I believe that was a topic that was brought up at the last work session, so we have moved forward on that, we're meeting with IS. They don't anticipate a difficult implementation since we already, the Utilities Commission and the city council already do that, so we don't think it will be an issue moving forward. Do have some congratulations to pass along. If you remember, I believe last month when I was here, I talked about Margaret and Lynn retiring, well, they haven't changed their minds. They are still retiring, but we have interviewed for Lynn's position. Lynn is out on leave, she'll be back in November. We have double-slotted that position, Ms. Kaitlin Francis on our staff, has been promoted to principal planner effective November 4th, and she's been with us over six years, increasingly increasing level of responsibility, she's going to do a great job, so if you have the opportunity, please congratulate her after the meeting. With that, I will say that for work session in a couple weeks from today, we're still evaluating items for the meeting, I'm not sure what we're going to have on there, can't guarantee that we won't cancel it, but can't say that we will either, so we'll, we'll get back to you, we'll let you know what we're doing there. With that, I'll turn it over to Desmond for the caseload, and that's all, for November, that's all I have as far as staff report goes.
Thank you, Chris. The final filing deadline has not passed yet, so we don't have a concrete number for the workload, but the pre-submitting deadline was this past Tuesday. We've got four cases coming in for, well, one is a final development plan, and the other three are zoning cases. One is a conversion from county zoning to city zoning for some property that was recently annexed. This past Monday at the city council meeting, the city council voted to remand a rezoning petition that you heard not too long ago on Coal Road. The petitioner was requesting NO zoning from RS9. They remanded that case back to the planning board for the petitioner to submit a site plan. He's going to be working on that and come back in a couple of months, so don't expect to see that one in November. And then we've got three planning board review items that will not be public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Is there anything else?
Have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. That's no problem at all.